Let's do it. Starting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, our government, and to the principle of justice for all.
I just see a motion to approve. I'm sending for consent. Motion for Virginia.
Second by both, second by David, all in favor. That's a consent agenda. Now we just look for motion to... That's the consent agenda. Just remember to be understanding these so if you guys got other questions, have a time to pull it out. To get your answers.
I think motion approved. I approve that consent agenda.
Motion to oppose. I think, so as I did, all in favor? Six oh. Mary?
Okay. Well, thank you guys for letting me come tonight. I'd like to, I don't know where to stand where you can see, see me. So I'm here, I'm Mary Neumeyer. I'm here to present some ways or some thoughts that I can help you with on maybe improving your retention of your staff and reducing your turnover. So the reason that those things are important, obviously, it makes your district more stable if you have those teachers that are coming in and staying here. It's going to also help you with attracting new talent when you do have to replace a teacher. And it's going to decrease your costs. It's costly to hire people and get them onboarded. So the things that I would do for you guys would be exit interviews, poll surveys, ninety day stay surveys, and retrospective exit surveys. So what does all of that mean? Exit interviews, I'm sure you guys are all very familiar with what an exit interview is. It's asking those teachers that are exiting, why are they leaving? What can we learn from that? It also, it's not just focused on the negative, it's also the positive. So you get to hear the things that they're going to miss while they're leaving as well. What you've done well, so you can continue those things on. It's used a structured interview guide, which means that the same questions are asked of everyone that is leaving, so that you have a true comparison from, from each interview. Your poll surveys are going to be brief and periodic, and you kind of own that. They're going to be pretty short surveys, so that hopefully that encourages people to complete those and give you the feedback that you want from them. And as far as periodic, it can be as frequent as you want, and the quantity that you do is up to you guys to determine. You can do a monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, however you guys feel like you're going to get the best information and how quickly you want that information. It's going to give you insight into what your current issues are, as well as if you guys have had changes in maybe policies, procedures, things like that, you'll be able to understand, are those going over well? Do they need to be adjusted? Are there concerns with what those changes have been made? You can address those issues promptly, because you're not waiting till somebody leaves to find out what the problems are. You're going to know what those problems are right up front, and you can, you can deal with those. It's a random selection, so we're not focused on people that are negative, and we're not focused on just hearing the positive. It's random selection, so you, you don't have the control over who's being interviewed. It's anonymous. It's important to be anonymous on those, because you want to get feedback. If people are fearful of retaliation, they don't want to share, and you're not going to get, there's no sense in doing it, because they won't be honest. Ninety day stay interviews, this is really focused on your new teachers. So after they've been there for ninety days, it's getting a survey to them to understand, what was that onboarding process like? Did they, were they made, were, did, were they made welcome or not? What, what expectations were set? Did we set them up for success, so that they can thrive in the environment that they're in? And then also, support. If you have a new teacher coming in and it's their first year teaching, their support is going to be a little bit different than somebody that's taught for ten years and comes into the district. And what's the initial impression? Do they come into an environment where people are angry? Are they coming into an environment where everybody is happy and wants to be there? Because that's what you want, because those are the people that want to stay. And again, that's anonymous, again, for that retaliation purposes. There's no really, no need to know who said it. We just need to know what the feedback is, positive and negative. And then a retrospective exit survey. What this would do is it would go back and survey the teachers that have left over the last five years, and it's finding out, what was the reason for leaving? What was their primary reason, and what's the secondary reason? What was their experience overall while they were employed here? And then any suggestions for improvement that they might have, as well as what you guys deem would be areas of focus based on that feedback. And that would be anonymous as well, because it really doesn't matter. You're going back to get that data for the last five years, so you have a baseline, and you can see from year to year, maybe there's been improvements already made, that you don't even realize, that it's gotten better. And deliverables from me would be with those exit interviews, providing reports with the key findings, any common themes that we're seeing there, and then making some recommendations, how you can get better. And poll surveys, it's just going to give you highlights on what those areas are for improvement, as well as areas that you're doing really well. And the same with your ninety day stay interviews. And then that retrospective exit survey is just giving you the baseline and helping you to determine from year to year if you're improving or not. So the cost for the services would be five hundred dollars a month. That is including four hours. I think for the most part, not knowing how many teachers are leaving each year, I think it would cover it, the four hours would. However, if you had a year where you had a lot of teachers that left, those are face-to-face interviews that would probably take thirty minutes to an hour each, depending on how much feedback they gave you. So those could take a little bit more time to get through. The additional hour fee is a hundred dollars per hour beyond, beyond that four hours. And then the retrospective exit surveys, that's just going to need to happen one time, and that's a flat fee of five hundred dollars to go back and send the emails out to all, all of those teachers that have left in the last five years, and then collect the data and put that information together for you. So what questions do you guys have for me?
Well, thanks for coming. I guess a question I have is, it's different, the school system is different than my work. We have a human resources department that I do that kind of exists in its own island that I work, my life works on, so we love the human resources. But I think, I don't know if you want to speak to that piece of what you could potentially provide as far as an outlet, maybe, and I know it would fall under a retainer part, but the cost per hour, if we had a certain HR issue, and we need to consult with you on it.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a great question, and we could certainly take a look at that and see what, what you guys feel the scope of that would look like, and how frequently and how available. Just like most of you guys in the room too, I have a full-time job, so being available during working hours, Monday through Friday, is probably a little bit harder. So what does it look like for you guys? What would your expectations be? Is it the evening hours? Is it the weekends? Is it through email? Again, primary job is going to take the focus during those working hours. But I think it would be something that we could certainly explore and take a look at once you understand exactly what you're needing to get a rate on that. Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you guys for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I will go ahead and get started. I know that you guys have this printout in your guys' packet, so I won't read through all of those things, because as I was making the list, I was like, we did a lot in the, in this school year. We were very, very busy and very active at school. Some of the things that I wanted to highlight, we did start out the school year by purchasing gift cards for each of the classroom teachers and each of the paras. Each of the classroom teachers got a hundred dollars, and the paras got a seventy-five-dollar gift card, and they could use that on classroom supplies, or wherever they saw needed for themselves and their students. You know, we always kind of want to give more to their classrooms, but are never sure, like, what certain teachers want to focus on that year, and so we thought, we'll just give them a gift card, and they can use that money however they saw fit. Our main fundraiser that we did in the fall of 2023 was our cookie dough fundraiser. Again, I think I touched on this the last couple of years whenever I presented, but we're doing the cookie dough sales every other year. We saw that whenever we started doing it every other year, we were getting a lot better income coming in from those fundraisers. So we did see and raise about eleven thousand dollars for our fundraiser for cookie dough. We, as far as some of the things that we did around the school, we did install the curtain on the elementary gym. We do need to make some tweaks to that, because it's kind of sagging in the middle, but at least we're trying to cover up the storage area that the elementary gym stage area has kind of become over the years. And so we got that put in. We did muffins for moms and donuts for dads, like we always do. We hosted a glow dance for the students. We did that one day, I think it was the day right before spring break started, and we did it right after school was out. The kids got picked up at about five o'clock, and it worked out great. The teachers didn't have to go home and then come back, and so it, the kids loved it. I think the teachers really enjoyed it, and so we are looking to hopefully do that again in the coming year. We did replace and install new adjustable height basketball goals, so that one could be taller and one could be shorter at the playground. Those look really great. And then the old basketball goals, we were able to donate to the city of Tipton. Hopefully, they can use them for part of the park expansion and some of the things that they want to do at the park then. We did small monthly treats for the teachers. We did solar eclipse classes for the eclipse viewing, just another kind of fun thing to do for the kiddos and the teachers as well. And then, of course, all the Teacher Appreciation Week gifts that we did in May. So some of the five-year goals that we have, a new thing that we're getting ready to start this year, and I think there was another printout that you should have too with all of the supplies, but we are looking to purchase, or we are going to purchase, all of the school supplies for all of the students this year, to take that cost away from our families, to take that stress away, and just the financial burden that sometimes school supplies can be. So we did ask that the students donate ten dollars to go towards that cost, to help cover and offset what we put into it. And then we gave them the option, if they wanted to donate extra money to cover other students, that they could. We had a pretty decent turnout with the forms turned in. I'd say we were at about, like, sixty or seventy percent. And then we had probably about forty percent of those donated a little bit extra, so that was really great. We are looking to kind of put that out in the community very soon too, so that if we have other community members that, you know, they want to give ten or twenty dollars to help cover some of the students that we don't have covered for, they can do that. And hopefully, that's a way to involve the community around us, whenever they're not normally involved in the school setting and having kids there. We also would maybe, and that should come in at around six thousand dollars, for especially this first year, getting everything started and everything reordered. You know, hopefully next year, that cost won't be quite as great, because we'll have some of the supplies already on hand. We would like to sponsor some of the teachers to go to the Get Your Teach On conference in Las Vegas. So hopefully, we can do that with some of the money that we have coming in after we do our fundraiser in the fall. And then we talked about maybe putting in and doing some landscaping in front of the elementary, just to kind of get it look, you know, maybe get rid of the weeds and make it look nice, and have some shrubs and stuff in front of there, making it look a little bit more welcoming. I, that is true, we would not have crawdads out front, but... Oh goodness. All right, so the fall fundraiser, since we won't be doing the cookie dough sales this coming year in 2024, in the fall, we will go back to doing the Read-a-Thon. That was a big hit two years ago, whenever we did that, so hopefully it will be again. And then the penny wars, we didn't do that this year. There again, sometimes whenever you're having all the kids turn in all their pennies all the time, then you have kind of a low year. And so hopefully, we can do the penny war again and have that work out really well for us. And then we'll do the bake sale at the little cheerleaders game like normal. Our officers are listed there. I did notice, as I printed it out today, that I had not changed the date on that. So that was a, that was an error on my part, but then the meetings are listed there, and some of the calendar dates that we would like to do some of our fun activities for the kiddos and the parents as well. Any questions? Well, thank you. We, we enjoy it, and it's, it's fun to definitely be an active part of the school, for sure, when I'm not subbing, you know?
Very good.
So, all right, well, thank you guys very much.
Are there more school supplies like that? Is there a channel to do that, that's cheaper?
Yeah, that's, and Kim Scheit was actually our teacher, was in charge of that at California. So when she came on, she brought the idea, and we started going through that this year. They have a list they collected from our original school supplies, and we just bulk ordering everything, and it keeps the store there for the teachers, so we kind of looked up, we would stick to that.
Hey. Just some of the things that I'm going to be talking about are the health educations with staff and student that I do every year, the dental services that we have, that we offer here through K through five, the screenings that we do every year for hearing, vision, height and weight. The hearing and vision, we do K through third grade, they're all screened. We also do the early childhood ones with Mrs. Thomas and preschool screenings. We do the spring kindergarten screenings for those coming in for next year. And then any special education requests, sometimes they have to have that for the paperwork, and then any parent requests. And then anybody enrolled in a PE class, we have to do height and weight on. So another couple of things that we did is I restocked the first aid kits in all the classrooms, and through a grant that I'll talk about later on, we have new updated emergency kits for the classrooms, and then always with the Monta Toc County Health Center, all the services that they provide for us. And then I'll talk about the office visits, and then the two different grants that I received this year. And then Therapy Log, which is a new thing that I started agreement and supervision with this year, and then the Wellness Program. So the student education programs, we do the teeth brushing with the Community Health Center of Central Missouri. They come and do, once a year in the beginning, and they do oral screenings with fluoride application, and then they bring in a portable clinic in the spring, and those still again are offered from K through fifth. And we do washing hands, and then also bathroom etiquette. Staff personnel, this year, we do first aid training and emergency training, and we always have Matthew Roulette, who used to be our PT trainer from MU, but now he's, he still comes in and does a lot of the CPR training for the kids in a class during the year, but he also comes in and trains our coaches and some in-house teachers and admin for the CPR. Still again, we have to have the seizure training requirement, that's a two-year thing. And then just educating the parents on immunizations, their healthcare plans, keeping the, their health records up on their kids, and action plans. So here are some pictures and some information about the dental services. When the Community Health Center came in November, they serviced one hundred and fifty-seven kids, thirty-one of those needed treatment fairly soon, two were urgent. So when the mobile clinic came this March, they serviced fourteen kids, and four of those from the fall were able to get the services needed. And clearly, they, you know, the, getting the kids, the treatments that they need and the transportation stuff is hard, so having this clinic come has been awesome in really focusing on those thirty-one kids, or those kids that are in urgent need, getting those treatments here, because as you can tell, they do X-rays, cleanings, fillings, extractions, all that good stuff. Again, the epilepsy training, Will's Law, it came into place. We do have thirteen students and staff documented with epilepsy, so it's a must-train thing for all in-house, anybody that has any contact with the kids, so employees, subs, cafeteria, bus transportation, coaches, parent organizations, the two years, so this year is going to be a lot that need to be recertified, and then all the new ones. So actually, here's this thing that you always ask me about, it's pretty cool. So the, again, the health screenings, the height and weight, I do want to try to work with a local nursing program school. I know that I did it when I was in nursing school. I would go to a lot of the schools and help with their, their screenings. So I'd like to look for a local nursing program to come and help with the teachers, the speech teacher, and, and get these screenings done, because it's a lot to do, all the hearing and vision, height and weight on these kiddos. But again, the Therapy Log, which I'll talk further about later, they, through the grant, they were able to get a lot of the updated equipment for me, so now I have a new height and weight machine that's all in one. I got a new hearing machine, and then the spot screener that I talked about for the last two years, about wanting, but it's very expensive. Luckily, I was able to borrow several times through Therapy Log and screen the kiddos with that. And the information, like all those things on the side, the far side and near-sided blurred vision, all that stuff, that thing can detect. It literally takes like two seconds to screen a kid. So it's a pretty cool tool, and was really helpful during all those screenings that I had. So here's the potential eye conditions that it detects. As you can tell, I had forty-nine, not necessarily forty-nine kids, but forty-nine eye conditions. Some kids had multiple things. But as you can tell, you know, the cignatism, you know, we've got twenty-four kiddos that have that. So trying to find all these things and detect them and help them get referred, you know, there's several that I have between the hearing and vision screenings that I have sent off and referred, and they ended up with either hearing aids or glasses, that a lot of the parents don't know, or don't take them yearly for these checkups. So just, it, that tool that we are, that I now have access to, has been pretty cool to detect all this stuff. So again, we have to do the height and weight, so our numbers are better, so three hundred and seventy-two students were totally screened for that. We are, you know, getting more to the healthier side of things from, you know, comparison to the earlier years. I still do want to make some improvements of things being offered, not so much candy, you know, for rewards, but you know, something a little bit, you know, maybe more recess or different things, just to try to help with that. So I talked about those kits. For a couple of years now, I had these little plastic things donated, and they just have little basic stuff that can keep the kids out of the hallway roaming all the time, just to come to get a Band-Aid or a mitt or chapstick. So I have those in all the classrooms, and I update those at the beginning of the year. But through the grant, I got new emergency kits, there they are. So we had orange, like neon orange, like drawstring bags in the classrooms that had some emergency stuff that we had done like two years ago, maybe, two, three years ago. And so I kind of updated them. These usually go inside those bags, and we, I like to have them like right at the entry of the doorways, and then we use the green and red cards for when, like if we do drills, or if we are actually in a tornado, fire drill, or any of those things. But these kits that my grant provided can, can take care of eight to ten people. So all that stuff goes in there.
The orange bags that we had were for if we had an intruder situation, they had supplies and...
Like it had like a...
Support that and take care of that.
To like lock the doors down. So now we have the first aid kits that go inside the orange bags, and then I will update those as needed. But that was, you know, those are pretty expensive, they do have a hundred and eight items in there, so I've received the high school side of them, and then I'll be collecting elementary soon, just to see what other stuff I need to update if they've been used. So some of the stuff that Monta Toc County Health Center always helps us do is the sneaker project. We serviced twelve kiddos this year and got to get them brand-new shoes and socks. That's always a fun project to work with alongside them. Then they come in August at our Back to School Bash. This year, we were able to service eleven students for their immunizations that were required for their eighth and twelfth grade year. The spring, we hit the ones that are getting ready to go into eighth and twelfth grade. We did ten of those. And then my biggest thing, every year, that I always want the hundred percent, we met this year for our state report in October, everybody was, met the requirements to be compliant, out of the five hundred and eighty students. And then in October, they always come for the flu vaccine to offer to our staff and students, which we serviced about sixty. And then also, they offer this summer, and there's kind of the schedule of the Misha eligible physicals that they offer for our kiddos. So here's my health visits, documented, I have sixty-two hundred sixteen. So you can see where my friends are in elementary. But junior high's doing pretty good too. So there's kind of a breakdown per grade on how many, the percentage, so...
Is that medicines too?
It's everything, yeah. You'll see, almost fifty percent is prescription medicine. So this isn't every type that I see, but I do, I pick a lot of the top things. And as you can see, almost fifty percent of my time is spent with medication and going and passing out meds. I spend, I have probably about fifty alarms going off on my phone every day to make sure I'm getting those meds to those kids at the time that they need to be. So yeah, I spend a lot of time doing that, but at least they're getting it, and they're learning, and, because, you know, if they're not getting it at home, you know, we may see behaviors, and then they're not getting their academics done, and then they're struggling. So it is important for these kiddos to get their medicine. So yeah, there's a little bit of what I do. So student counters went up just a smidge this year, but pretty much... So student encounters went up just a smidge this year, but pretty much they're about the same from the last year. See, about the same amount of kids. Sent about the same amount home. Okay, so talking about my two grants. So last year, from the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I received a feminine hygiene product grant. It was a little over eight hundred dollars. This year, I got seven hundred and forty-nine. So I have an abundance amount of feminine hygiene products. Couple of years ago, Mrs. Metter and I and another student, a student brought it to Mrs. Metter, kind of wanted a little area in the girls' bathroom to provide. And I actually was at my daughter's basketball game at High Point, and I took this picture because we've been looking forever for a cute little thing for bathrooms. But this was set up in their bathroom, and I thought it was cute. So something like this is what I'm wanting to put in like the junior high and the high school girls' bathroom for now, and then eventually work towards even offering stuff for the boys, like deodorant and combs or deodorant again. But I thought that was cute, and it's inviting, and you know, then they're not having to come all the way to my office for a need. They can get it there. And so that is something that I would like to work, especially now that I have a ton of stuff and money for those, from those grants. So through the therapy log, I also received over eight thousand dollars worth of equipment. So I, like I said, I got new supplies for the hearing-vision stuff. We were desperate, even though we have like five wheelchairs, nobody could fit in them. And like the seat were, and screws were coming loose, and if somebody larger sat in it, it was probably going to fall through. So I got a larger one, and I had none that actually raised. As we know, we have several kids that end up having surgery and can't bend their knee, and I'd never had a wheelchair that like their leg could straighten out. And so the parents were always having to go out and try to find a wheelchair. So now I have a really fancy, more capability wheelchair. Also, next to all of our AEDs, I got these bleeding control kits. They're, and they're mounted and they have cases on them, and they've been put up everywhere we have the AEDs. And I got a new one with our money. I noticed that we didn't have one near the high school office. The best, the one was by the, the high school gym, the elementary gym, and we never, and then we have a traveling one. But we never had one near the high school, and I felt like if the ag department or somebody contacted the high school office with an emergency, they were going to have to drive, go all the way over to the, you know, gym and then go out there. So now we have one right outside the main office for the high school, junior high. And then these emergency evacuation lockdown backpacks, huge. Those are survival supplies for over thirty individuals. Those are in my room and both offices. Okay, so therapy log, I keep talking about it. So this is a, I have to be supervised by somebody that oversees me, gives me the standing orders of which I can follow, what I can and cannot do, what I, what medicines I can give, what I can't give. And usually, in the past, I've gone through the clinic here in town. But going through some of these conferences, I had met Angie, who Dr. Rob actually knows personally and used to work with her. And so she always kept trying to hit me up, like because she, she wanted, because she knew. And so I started listening more at the conferences about this and looking more into it and reached out to her. And it has been a blessing because she has been phenomenal to work with, the fact that we got over eight thousand dollars worth of supplies. I get that really cool spot screener that I've always wanted, you know, to borrow. So she has been great to work with, the whole program has. And even now, we're working with her and the maintenance director, trying to get more stuff for my office. And they will, she'll be like, we'll get it, we'll pay for it, you know. So they've been awesome to work with. So pretty much she supervises me. I do frequent virtual visits with her or she'll come and visit me. Pretty much monthly at least. She always has great information. One thing I'm going to be putting in place, I had it earlier on the screen, is red folders for every classroom that has just basic general information of like how to deal with a diabetic or how to deal with a person with seizures. And then in that classroom, if they have a certain child, their health plan will be in there so they know how to have access. So she's bought all those red folders for me. So just having all that information and just having somebody else to coincide with and talk to if I have a question, always available. And if she's not available, somebody else is. So they always know and work with the state people as well, and so she always is updating me with opportunities or anything, information that I need to have out. So that has been a great new change for the program. And then as health and safety wishes, like I said, I, I'm still interested in trying to get the telehealth services here at school. Like I said, we started it once before. We were, we signed the contract, COVID hit, it went away. So just trying to find another company, because I think it would be beneficial to some of our kiddos that don't have access. So what it is, it's kind of in this picture, like, you know, that would be me, the nurse, and I would, you know, put a, you know, I would have the video to go in their ear or their throat, and then the doctor would be on the other end and diagnose them pretty much with like strep throat, or I would test them, and then they could prescribe them. So they don't have to go and travel for the transportation to a doctor's office or, you know, or an urgent care clinic. And then they can just order the medicine and pick it up when they get home. So I just think that would be a beneficial eventually for our kiddos here. Just because transportation is a huge problem with our kiddos and being thirty-plus minutes away from Sedalia or Jeff City to get the medical treatment that they may need. Or it goes, and it's just a continuous cycle. They're always sick because they don't get to go to the doctor and, and they don't get better. So I just think that that will be a good thing. So I still would like to try to find somebody that does that. So our wellness program. I'm really struggling to get these people involved, man. This is the coolest thing ever. So anybody that carries our insurance here at school, if they have a smartwatch or a smartphone, it's easy and you earn free money. You just have to walk and, or go to the doctors. And so it's an opportunity to, just a preventative way for routine checkups, diet, exercise, and then you get free money. So we did have nine more than last year sign up, so that was pretty cool. But like, I had nine people receive two hundred and fifty, three people received a hundred and fifty, and then three received fifty. So just by walking around and wearing it or going to checkups, they get that. Again, I still, like one of, one of the ways that they can earn money and points through the program is by having their like blood work done through a wellness fair. And so I still am interested in bringing Montahtown here to do that, but it is a cost. So it will be a cost for the staff members to do that. So because they want it done through a fair, not necessarily going individually to the doctors and having blood work done. So that's the only downfall to that. But, but as you can tell, over a hundred schools participate in this, over eight thousand employees. So it's a pretty neat thing if I can only just keep getting more people involved. And that's it. Any questions? That is like totally true. No questions? How do I?
Okay, that's me. A little bit of good news out of the Capitol. Looks like the SAT is going to be paid out significantly more. Probably enough to help our budget quite a bit. I'm anticipating we might be somewhere around two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars more. And our budget would just help hold, especially since we're down spending about five a quarter million this year. Reminder, next, this is a double month, so a double meeting month. Along with a complete financial breakdown, a better presentation, some works, to kind of make it simple but easy to understand. So we have it next meeting, twenty-sixth, next month, along with the open forum, we'll also have the official programs here. So we're kind of splitting a little bit, very busy this time of year. We'll get that financial overview, we'll also have a meeting in the forum. We may also have a few odds and ends that we need to mesh up, so we can actually be off in July. Completed there, the board's review, and that's just there to discuss it now we can. But probably just, probably just want to bet on your homework page versus discussions, teacher salaries for twenty-five beyond. In light of SBD seven twenty-seven, this word gets confusing, but I'll be produced next year. That's twenty-five, twenty-six, not upcoming here, that's twenty-four, twenty-five, one that you could go into. Twenty-five, twenty-six, if we be mandated that we offer a minimum teacher salary of forty thousand dollars. That is mandated minimum for this coming year, this coming year. There is a grant, it is one hundred percent funded, to make up the gap from where we are at for a new fully certified teacher at thirty-three, five, all the way to one thousand. What remains in the mister and ether out there is what is the state going to do when the law mandates that we pay forty thousand to start for twenty-five, twenty-six? And everybody has to move to that, by law. And then how do you figure what a school district gets to help them if you're a rural school like us? It's going to get a big move going and all of a sudden starts eating into our balance big time. How much help will we want to get? That's the big question, like how much help is going to be given? There is some money being set aside, but how will that be allocated? It's not really clear. I think one of the things that's floating around in some meetings I went to and listened to our lobbyists in their last week and this month was that the allocation for rural districts to make up a gap would come based on our twenty-four, twenty-five salary schedule. So what you're getting ready to improve in this month may be the basis for how they determine what you'll get when the mandate comes. So it's an important decision, right? So there are three salary schedules there for you to look over. I don't suggest we go through it all the time, but it takes some time. Take an hour and just go through it, send me questions that you might have about that. The highlighted green portions of the notes to kind of explain what the salary schedule does and what it tries to accomplish. And so that mandate's coming. Here's where it gets a little problematic. So twenty-five, twenty-six, now next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's when it says it's still off, so we have to make a choice. Then the master's plus ten years would be at forty-six thousand. So you've got forty and forty-six, two little benchmarks inside your salary schedule. The year after that, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'll have to be at forty and forty-seven. The year after that, you have to be at forty and forty-eight. So twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it's forty, forty-eight. Then twenty-eight, twenty-nine is when it becomes subject to inflation. That's where, as I was talking to some of the financial people at Master, SBA, they said, how will they determine this? And I finally posed the question to, you know, big online webinar, a bunch of superintendents and our lobbyists. How is that going to be determined on what we are mandated to move our salary schedule to at twenty-eight, twenty-nine? That would mean that we could go up to three percent in a year. So it's like an inflationary adjustment. Anybody seen the problem with that real fast? You see that inflation just keeps tack, getting tacked on up to three percent every year. So around January, they think of every year, the state will release the numbers, we'll get guidance from DESI, and that starts getting done. So what are salary schedules going to look like that coming forward? It's, there's no brakes, no pumping the brakes at that point. It just keeps going. So when we were asking for, you know, a little bit of leeway from our community to say, hey, we need to, need to be able to adjust our tax level, this is why, because this is all coming, we got to fight. It's like the mandates are coming, and we have no ability to stop them at this point. We have to be able to keep up. So budgeting keeps getting a little harder as we go forward. It's nice because the state advocacy target is being raised, but again, a few hundred thousand dollars more. And the preventing, DESI's having a good job with this, showing what it takes to adequately educate a student in the state of Missouri. And they're saying if it goes high, seventy-one hundred, sixty-two hundred, seventy-one hundred, is about how it will end. That's, it's something about knowledge roughly for us. That'd be great. What's the problem with that? If you write in a letter to the governor, you know that where's the money coming from? Because it's like they're biting off more than they can chew at the state level, the mandates keep coming. So will you see that, okay, you get a waiver this year, or who knows? It's like roll the dice on this one, because it's not really clear where the funding comes from. And that's why so many school districts were saying, hey, don't do this. Put the funding mechanisms in here so we can actually pay people and meet these mandates, because we want to do that, too. We want to keep the people in the profession. But the other problem with this is that traditionally, and people who've been around a long, as long as I have, and a few others maybe, also see that what's been done in the past is, is they'll say, well, the state advocacy target is seventy-one hundred for twenty-nine, thirty. Seventy-one hundred, but you know, that state tax money just didn't come in, so we're only going to be able to give you ninety percent of that. Or be able to give you eighty-four percent of that. And, and what happens is, is that happens throughout the school year. It doesn't happen on the front end to tell you when you make the budget. It happens in February, March, or April, or May, as you're going through a school year that doesn't look like enough taxes are coming in and they start shorting you. But they don't just short you with the state advocacy target, they also look at transportation, which at one point, and even a year when I was here, it was down to about as low as nineteen or twenty percent of what we were due. So the state would say, we'll give you seventy-five percent of your allowable cost for transportation. Or, well, sorry about that, we had to, we put money somewhere else or something else happened, or we want to say we fully funded schools. So, but, but we didn't fully fund transportation, so only a ton percent. Well, this year it's twenty-five. We get seventy-five percent of allowable costs by state statute, but if the money's not there, it shorts as it goes through a year. That makes it really hard when we're trying to budget, we're trying to figure out, well, how much can we spend? How much can we pay teachers? Every district goes through this. Nobody would do their own budget like this. Nobody did their own budget like this, you know. When you, you take a job and you're paying, paid twenty dollars an hour and you do your budget, and you know how much your rent is, and everything else, you can plan it out over here. What's happened traditionally is when they bite off more than they can chew, they start shorting you. And that's what a lot of our lobbyists and people at MSBA, and some of our associates and people else are bribing about. They're trying to say, look, if, if the money doesn't come through, you need to have the funding sources to actually live up to what you want us to do with salaries and also meet the SAT, state advocacy target, which you say is adequate to, to educate a student in Missouri. Plus, you're mandating we raise all the salaries. How, where's this going to come from? So I'm going to tell you what is on the line right now. Is that if you talk to lobbyists, when you talk to some of these people who are dealing with this stuff statewide, what they talk about is consolidation schools, is there's too many small schools. What do they mean by small? Do they mean Tipton small? Do they mean Latham small? Do they mean Prairie Dome small? Do they mean Laroche small? What, what do they mean exactly? That's what they're laying it back, I think unfairly, because we, we ask a lot of our local people. That's what they're laying it back, I think unfairly, because we, we ask a lot of our local people, and we go off our assessed evaluation of our wealth and what's here. Nobody really knows what that means yet. But the pressure's coming to keep school open and to meet all the mandates the state decides we have to do from, everything from transportation to special education, you name it, to food service, to everything we do. Keeping a school open is, it, it's pretty foggy on, just where's the economy going? Anybody know? I don't know. You know? I wake up in the morning and it's just bad weather, right? So this is what we're faced with going into, you know, the next few years here. Of just seeing what the state will do, what they won't do, and what the economy's gonna be like. The federal election will have a lot to do with it, I think our state elections will have a lot to do with it. And we also see a lot of support going out there for private, um, options for parents to not be in public schools. A lot of things in that, in that bill seven twenty-seven, talking about, um, you know, how students can have a choi, sorry, parents can have a choice. They just don't give whatever they like. It's not quite open to open enrollment yet, but there are some funding mechanisms that are kicking up. And you have to wonder if, um, state regulations, these kind of things, if it's just, just all, all be cheaper. I don't think that teachers are cheap, and I don't think that educators are cheap. And I don't think great schools are cheap. There's not, um, with all the things they ask us to do, what we want to offer kids. So anyway, okay, that's my little diagram on that. Um, but we'll talk a lot more about that in our next meeting, because I want you guys to have, if in fact you want to send any questions, if I, I don't know, somehow I'll look it up, or I'll call somebody who doesn't know. Next month, we'll have those vocational programs come in, we'll have the odds and ends. We've got the salary schedules there, and we're gonna kind of look at those and think those over, and help you think about it. Also, we completed a safety grant. All our side doors, our main doors were all taken care of, our classroom doors were all taken care of, those deadbolt locks from the last, uh, bond issue. We also had some side doors that, that had the wooden doors, but they also had the metal doors, and those wooden doors just kind of swung freely, and it was one, one, one step in, and then there was nothing to stop anybody from getting in there. I know I told some of you, we had somebody wander in there one day, uh, this last school year, who we brought safely, that did not go on there, and what really confused me, had to get the law over there, no use hurt, no use. Wasn't crazy, but it was a little odd, because the guy did not know where he was and where he should be, but, um, that's been several months past now, so we, uh, there was a grant available for some additional security, and they had come in through the junior high door, which they had done. And they had one door, I don't know if it was pop, it was a rock or whatever, but now those inner doors. Um, at the junior high, inner lock, inner doors over there at the playground, the wooden ones, they all require key cards, and now you get into the first door and you get kind of a little busted fuel, and then you gotta get through the next set of doors, so it's slowing down anybody that might want to do this part. So there's, uh, the two elementary doors, one of them's the playground, uh, junior high, and we also did an upgrade to the main door. Um, and the, uh, elementary main door, so we actually have a, so our staff don't get locked in there and can't get out, if you put that key card on there as well. So that, that's kind of good improvement. That was nineteen thousand dollars. Um, we got to get the lead-out grant, I finished the final for that this, this month. Um, Bob was working with some additional filters, nobody's drinking lead tainted water, you know, all those mark, there are some few sinks and things, we're gonna need some additional filtering though. As I think it's five parts per billion, so it's not even a very high level of lead. Where they exceed sap, we can't do some additional filtering, sometimes that's just, that's not due to the lead pipes, it's just due to the water sits in some of our sinks and stuff like that, but we have some testing that's already been done, and then we test that and we put it built right on. So Bob will be working on that. We'll have some bills coming in, coming in five. And BMT is prepping to, uh, bring about a hundred kids to our school and work in their community, isn't that happening? Any questions?
Anybody got anything, questions? So on your salary schedule that you have laid out, uh, to draft, or to draft, yeah. But, so, I'm gonna use Miss Ashley, Miss Metter, as it, uh, Miss Metter's been here a little longer than Ashley. And not saying nothing bad. Not just stepping on any place though. But when we, when we have to go to the step, or go to the forty thousand, you know, a teacher, you know, with more, are they gonna start at their same step? Are they gonna, everybody's gonna go in at step one, forty thousand?
Oh, oh, no, uh, they'll, they'll be right, like, they're on step, yeah, they keep their steps in their ears and all that, yeah. They don't immediately, they'll go, that's a brand new teacher in the building, and then they, they, like, who just hired somebody out of college.
I just wanted to clarify that myself.
And that's kind of a new thing, and I remember I just became a teacher there, and it was like, how, how is this thing going? I was a teacher.
So, excuse me, everybody's got their administrative reports there. So if I have any questions, summer school's still rocking and rolling?
So this is my last report, so I'm gonna take a really long time to drive Ashley crazy.
Did you go fishing today?
I did. Well, I didn't, I didn't actually fish, they didn't let me use a pole, and all the kids have poles, and they just told me I had to watch.
So you wasn't on the fishing team?
I was, hey, I'm a girl, so yes, I was on the mini team. So there was a ten to one, girls won over boys today. I helped take a snapping turtle off of the fishing line, so does that count?
Sure.
Okay, and so, we caught a snapping turtle, a frog, and then the girls caught a whole bunch of fish. It was the boys that caught the frog and the snapping turtle. He was a little snapping turtle. I think so. So, but the boys won yesterday, so it's on tomorrow when they go to Sedalia to see who can edge out, win the fishing tournament in the class.
Tomorrow's day three of the fishing tournament?
Tomorrow is day three of the fishing tournament, and then Friday is out at Manitow, which is the real challenge, we all know.
That is master's class.
At Tipton, that's right. Um, anyhow, uh, and one, one kid came in today packing four different poles, four different kinds of poles, he was ready, so it was very good. Uh, you can see some pictures on the top, uh, Hunter's Education, we have thirty-one kiddos in Hunter's Education. Uh, of that, twenty-four qualified out of the class. Just because you take the class doesn't mean that you pass it and get your Hunter's Education license, you have to go through the procedures of it, pass the test, and that fits all set in. So twenty-four out of thirty-one. Uh, see some highlights there from our bigger, faster, stronger weights program, Coach Dean, uh, working with kiddos, uh, there. I wanted to recognize our end of the year, our archery team. I understand that Missouri, uh, we're the only school from Missouri represented at the archery, uh, world in Florida. And then baseball, of course, first ever that we did anything like that. Uh, and then we have two track athletes, uh, one that medaled at state, and then of course our golfers. So our spring sports, spent a lot of time at state and national competitions, we had a good spring and good winter as well. And then of course our end of the year events with graduation, I have some photos in there. Uh, summer school updates, we do have seventy-three high schoolers enrolled, uh, we have two, we went down to seventy-one, we had two middle schoolers that just decided it wasn't for them. Uh, we offer, you can see all the courses that we've offered. Uh, next week is tech week with robotics and broadcasting, and that's gonna be really exciting, because they're going to, I'll probably say it wrong, uh, lab pro space or lab space pro in Jefferson City to test their robots at the end of the week, to see after they build them, to go there and see what they're supposed to do. Um, today was our, we had our last student finish, uh, fifth quarter credit recovery. So it was the very last one that we needed to reclaim the credits to help them move forward. Everything that you see at the bottom half of the report is tier three. Uh, for those of you that are new, tier one are basic interventions with your educators in the classroom. Tier two is where we add that support during the day, uh, with the kiddos going into this mountain and seeing them throughout the day, so I have some statistics there for you. And then tier three is the fifth quarter and the after-school, and that can be for behavior or academic, either one. Um, middle school, ninety-one percent of the kiddos reclaimed their credit. Uh, high school, eighty-six percent reclaimed. Uh, as I, I put the notes on there, two chose not to attend. Um, and I say chose, because that was a long conversation with parent and student, and they still chose not to attend. Um, and then one moved to another school district, and they didn't, they're not going to attend. Um, I was really proud of the following, you'll see second semester totals. These, that one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five visits, that's Miss Melton. She met one thousand seven hundred and eighty-five times during second semester only with kids during the school day. Her biggest week was she saw a hundred and fifty-five students in one week of support from school day, Monday through Friday. And then at the bottom is our after-school minutes, which we get special additional attendance for. Um, it's turned in, so we get a little bit of add-in money, um, to help support that program. Uh, there was, uh, a hundred and twenty-three visits for high school after-school, um, first semester. A hundred and fifteen visits after-school second semester. So, uh, sixty-nine hundred minutes second semester with seventy-three eighty-first semester, so you're talking around, uh, fifteen thousand minutes, almost there. Almost a few thousand minutes of support after-school with our students to help them be successful in their academics, um, in that tier three support. And then I put a really great picture of our graduating class, the money that we gave, uh, second semester gold card and silver card honor rolls.
Can I add something on that, Miss Metter? You actually broke a million, because you forgot the, uh, Mr. Bliberry, he would have had some scholarships through Marine Corps.
He would have, right, it would have broke over the million if we'd listed how much the Marines gave him. But we know that he's giving a lot with what he's doing in our world today as it is. So, and then the last thing I put was a great picture of me and a student who always smiles at me, and, uh, day one this year, Miss Bestian and Miss Barber challenged me, there's a kind of a, a running joke with us about red dresses. And so at the beginning of the school year, um, Miss Barber and Miss Bestian challenged me to wear all red the very first day of school, which I did with red Reeboks and a really cute red summer dress. And so at graduation, I made sure that I wore all red the close of the year, so, and closed my year time here, so there's my report.
We sit here and see who can talk for longer, so I'm gonna, I'll let her have it tonight.
You know it's me.
Um, we have, right now, after people have stopped coming, about a hundred and eighty-four students at summer school. We're gonna finish up next week with trip to the movies, we're gonna have a fishing day at the park with runge, um, and conservation, and we're averaging about ninety percent attendance. We're gonna give away some bicycles for students, um, a raffle with perfect attendance. One of the big highlights in my report is our academic, the end of the year results. Um, building goals we set at the beginning with teachers was to have fifty percent of the students at or above grade level. And when we took our first diagnostic test in both reading and math, we were in the teens on both subjects, some of them in twelve percent. We ended the year, um, with our tier one, that's at or above grade level. In reading was fifty to seven percent, so above our goal, and fifty-eight percent in math at or above grade level. So again, reaching our goal that we set for ourselves, um, inch that forward a little bit further next year and keep chiseling away at where we want to be. Um, like I said, next week, we're gonna be going to the movies, and we've got some fishing plans, so big things for summer school, finish it up.
Nice. Anybody any questions? Did you participate in the fire department or?
You know, Aaron Fassler did a good job of making sure we participated. You just keep breaking it up. We were all about it. Yeah, kids loved it.
And the snapping turtle was returned to the water, I know they're endangered, so just to make sure that's on pace, but we did return the snapping turtle to the water.
I'll thank both of you. Jason, you guys got your reports there. So moving on to new business. I'll have to bounce me another thing, a little touch on this.
I gave you guys just a, a rough estimate of what I thought we would save, um, on purchasing a van. Uh, we're using all the time. Our savings have, it's worth probably if you want to spend money toward that direction, I think it saves money over time, I gave you a hundred thousand mile comparison. Employee travel, it's about a twenty-five percent savings over a hundred thousand miles, sixteen grand, sixteen four. Um, on the, uh, event travel, you're, you're saving about thirty-five thousand dollars over a hundred thousand miles, I thought that was the best way to think about it. But, um, I agree, you're a broker that can do that, and just use them as much as we can use them. Seems like it's always in use where I want to be at. We're running a little bit of our own transportation. Spend a little to save a lot. And a little bit of, uh, looking at like Honda Odyssey, or it's whatever similar type that you have now, it'd be right around thirty-five thousand dollars or something.
How's the air movement transportation? You know, I, I seem to have a list in here, it's forty dollars a hundred five rate, if they're sending a grant. Could face with fuel for the buses. So we're paying up, do you want to?
Or what?
Yep.
Do you know how often we're having a conflict between the two vans? But, I mean, I can't, because that's my point, I mean, because a lot.
I put it on the calendar, but Jason's prolonged, makes the determination, so we hope that would be one that would really be like.
We look like if I'm going to the conference during the day, I'm going to Warrensburg. And I know there's a group that's come to Jeff City and it's special, that needs kids, or it's a, a pep rally or something like that, I see it as a kids. That keeps us from having a staff handle a personal vehicle, riding their own car, so, um, sometimes we try to deal with it, it's two groups, try to deal with whoever has the furthest trip, so we're using the bus.
How many times are there conflicts in here?
There's usually a few, because I just put it on the calendar, or a couple, or something, the determinations they walk through.
Yeah, I guess. It would be a com, it would be a combination of conflicts and where two buses would solve a problem, or not two buses. Two vehicles would solve a problem, and where they'd cause for a bus, right?
It depends on the size, like if you had a track, and you're involved, and you're looking there, you could, you could run two vans.
Because you're saying a hundred thousand miles on here, could our, some of that, a portion of that is being solved already.
Right, there it's, yeah, there's already, there's, we already have a solution, yeah, what's the difference by having a second, how much savings can you get? Because it's not a one for one, because we already have the one.
But, gonna have to look at it, we're gonna have to use shirts on another vehicle, so.
See, that's going on, yeah, on our insurance, yeah.
And is girls' basketball going to be less this year, is that right?
Well, this wouldn't be big enough for the basketball team, right?
What's that?
This ma, a van like this would not be big enough.
Right, but they already used a van a lot previous years, but I just, I thought the discussion was they were going back to less this.
They have, if we had two vans, they could probably use two vans, probably get fourteen if you like.
I'm not sure that's right, because I think forty was a van seat.
Mine, I have one that seats eighty, and that's the most. Including the driver.
So you start with fourteen.
At most. Maybe, maybe they'll give them, how many people are?
Over seventeen.
Yeah.
But I thought that we, I thought we were told that you had said something called, but I haven't, go back to using the bus.
It's up to you, yes. I think it looks better as us coming, as one unit. You know, if it's a small sport, golf, you know, with five or six, or I'm, I'm on a golf team or track, you know, that's one thing, you know, there's no reason to take a bus with them, take a wagon. But if, you know, instances where we take a van and we leave the responsibility up to parents, then, you know, kids are arriving on time, are late, we're not showing up as a team. You know, I think we need to present ourselves a little, like, if there's more than one, or any one of the way, I'll, we'll take the bus.
I mean, when I was, oh, man.
What he said is absolutely correct, I mean, that was original. That discussion was that on these small trips, that's why we got the original van, because of what he just said.
And I get the, like, you know, I know, like, football, coaching, makes all the kids hard to bust back, so it was better. I mean, you know that it's gonna be cool. A basketball game, I mean, I know a lot of kids are going with their parents, so I understand that wanting, I mean, the boys' basketball team doesn't. So, and they have, they're not staying now, kids.
What's the problem?
Just my opinion, I, I just don't know if we have, I mean, right now, I'm not sure.
Just my opinion, I, I just don't know if we have, I mean, right now, I'm not sure, it would be worth, I mean, it's a sport, you buy something else, considering all the stuff, we don't know that. And, I mean, if, if we have more data, I guess, to say, okay, this is how many times had we had the second van, um, it would have been used, and because of that, it saved, would have saved us this amount, um, that would, maybe, help us make a.
Did the boys take it to Florida and mount it back here?
That's my concern, is I'm not sure a van is big enough to do much.
Yeah.
It's, you know, just small groups, like small groups.
So, did they want to take two vehicles to go down there, or, or how did they get down there and just?
Because you would have, only you'd have to have two small groups, or one little bit larger group, that you could fit two vans for to make a difference. Do we have, if we have an, if we have a teacher or somebody going to a conference, Miss Melton used to talk, uh, a conference, um, do we reverse for a personal mileage?
Yes.
If she takes her own car or the van? The iris controls that, right?
We just passed it, I, and so, I think that would be a place to go in Missouri.
I, I knew that.
So, the general consensus, I guess, you're just gonna wait on this van?
I think it's a good idea later on, because our current van has, I think it's at a rear somewhere, it had several hundred thousand miles on it.
No, a little over.
Little over, okay, I bet, but, uh, at some point, we'll have to look to replace it, and maybe prior to having to replace it, it'll be by the second one and see how it works out, and then if it, if that's not working out, then we're gonna replace the old van, see what I'm saying there, I mean, give it a test run, and if it works fine with two vans, and if it, if it's just kind of a waste of effort, uh, then we just don't replace the old van when we decide that it's our idea, just no man's fault.
Fair enough, moving on, facilities plan in front of you, this, I'm gonna read about it.
If you haven't taken a look at it, it's there, um, and we could do this at the next meeting, I put it on there, just so that you guys will start looking at it, um, on just what you all want to do. And your facilities fund for, you have about a half a million dollars sitting there right now, um, we're not really gaining a lot of money there, um, there's some in there for the nearby statue, but it's, um, we're paying our lease purchase up there, that's why we did that transfer that you passed on, consent agenda, just to kind of make that payment, um, to the HVAC that's on the renovation, that pot, that bond project, that all the inflation ran into. But I think that's good for you guys to look at that, and then at some point, we have a discussion in the future, if not now, um, about what are you gonna seek out, you know, just walk around the district, you're gonna have one presenter, uh, he'll do a little here, talk to you about some community members that he's spoken to, um, several, as a matter of fact. So, I thought it was a good thing to put it in, on your homework list, because you should be aware of where the facilities plan is now, and talk, start getting started, talking about where you want to be. Um, we've got sixteen members on this board of education since twenty seventeen, so, this is not Dr. Rob's plan, this is Lord's plan, this is, this is something you guys would agree with, advise, and rely on, put into, and then I work together and talk about what you guys were talking about, so, two members of the scheme that make posts, and just kind of make you go to where, um, David Barrett, just kind of what options are out there, and what's been going forward, and do a bit of history in there, too. For your reviews, and kind of understand what happened there, you know, because it's hard to keep up with it out here, and, um, at angry. Any questions on that, maybe just put that on another agenda item, where you guys wanna discuss, you can tell Craig, if you guys want that at Mary Ann, or, you know, discuss it now at all.
Let it over, Chris. One question I have around the values, um, it's asked for the whole, the whole angle, then, is there a reason it's identified for demolition?
Um, that was some discussions from other board members, it was just kind of crumbling, and that, um, they indicated to me that at some point it would go, um, if we would ever grow, there is enough space on the hill, I'm talking to architect in the past, a few years ago now, that, um, because of the price of land and the price of infrastructure that grows in, and the power, everything else, if you ever wanted to build a new elementary school, which is probably what you should do, if you start to see growth, it's gonna happen, elementary level, growth can happen in a lot of districts. That would be a great place to start your elementary, your new elementary, it might start with pre-K five, and pre-K, pre-K K one, and then you would second, so you have an operation, you have to go, there are so many health buildings up there. Doesn't that go, and then you could plan that footprint, there, picture at the back there, other people take a look at it, associate acres and everything, that I screwed, a new elementary, you could put it there at one point. And there's another reason why, we talked about having a turf field there as well, because then we could practice school anymore, if you use that turf field as much as you want. So, the one they set, and so it was kind of like, I'm talking through, how do we make the best use of our space, and plan for growth, as opposed to wait till it smacks us in the face, and we gotta know what to do with that. Thirty-five kids in the classroom, and what happened, and you kind of saw a little bit of that back a few years ago, when we saw seventy-four freshmen show up, don't you expect that? And Miss Madder, wanna talk about when seventy-four freshmen showed up one year?
You get three sections of that, I think, that's what it is.
Yeah, Miss Madder was working hard down there, trying to figure out where to put kids, and if you had a couple, two, three classes like that, that would have been tough to deal with, I think. So, if you don't have a plan on how we're gonna use the, which is, looks kind of like a building down there, if you look at it from a grid, of where are things gonna be ten, twenty years from now, as needs come up? Needs come up, where are things gonna, where are they gonna be, it doesn't mean you stick to the plan necessarily, it's just a discussion of user possibilities for us in the future. Instead of, hey, where are we gonna put that new elementary, do we need five, oh, wait, let's have it in high school, let's go put it out here somewhere, you know, that happened one time, right? And it, and was that really projecting to the future and saying, well, it's not what we really needed, and you said, huh, so, and probably with good cause, they said, oh, because I don't think we're using our footprint, completely planning, but the use of it on budget, so, on a budget, it would be whether or not that collect bill is starting the elementary, when we go to the county, zero, nine, seven, hundred, or circle drive up there, starting. And that allows you to grow without buying new land, infrastructure, open new parking lots, really, you, you just, as you grow, so, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah.
But that comes, it's like, if we wanna keep that building, I mean, we're not tearing it down yet, it's like, um, you can't tear it down until you can actually have a place that, you know, current use has to be there. Where you're developing lawnmowers or anything else, because of, there, I spent quite a lot of time in, now, with the, the boys are hired, so, make it, it's actually. And roofs are, there, there's a nice prediction of what, when roofs are coming up, and whether you can, you know, what your warranties are, we didn't have this, um, Craig, Bo, hired me a long time ago. We didn't have a facilities plan, did, we didn't know what was what, what was breaking down, we all kind of walked into it, found out the HVAC was fixed or repaired daily. I'm like, what's going on, I stopped, he didn't say anything at the time, oh, it's always breaking down, Dr. Rob, I was just putting in, I said, whoa, what's going on, let's get up there, take a look, started having cests, you know, and that kind of became part of the bond issue, so, you were kind of doing it all the fly, so, it was, might, you get a trim pillow, it's a, you know, a bit full, uh, I think there's a link in that, either full, uh, or better than that.
God, isn't it?
Yeah, it shows you that, and there was some things that, showed us some things that were not doing so well, and fixing it up is, uh, about sixteen grand.
Actually, I guess, my question would be, do you, do you see any major growth in, I mean, I guess, since we have a preschool, we're kind of seeing some of the kids build, do, do you see a major growth coming at this point yet?
Um, we just looked at numbers for next year, and we're actually twenty-five less students than for next year coming in, projected, now, we'll get kids who enroll and come in, but we're at twenty-five less elementary students.
Those are the classes that are listed in there.
And kindergarten coming in is looking at like thirteen or fourteen students per class, so that's significantly less than the twenty-one, twenty-three used. Oh, they'll be, if you always get one in there, we have fifth grade class that's pretty small like that right now, and then, it'll, it should ride back up again, I know that preschool's full, when I talk to the area preschools, I kind of see what they are getting coming in. They have bigger classes behind it, it was just an off year, so, yeah, just kind of what we're looking at.
Age ten kind of gives you those projections of where we are, for, well, that's where we were for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then we'll, we'll project again, just kind of look at how those classes look, so we're averaging about forty-four kids per class right now, pretty, pretty stable, we've been stable for a long time. But that doesn't mean that, at every school, there's a kind of a certain point where growth starts happening, usually it was one part of smoothly, when houses start to re-rehab, people get tired of it, and they're sitting, it's, it's right on top of you. So, that's why you have a plan, there's something to discuss and say, how am I gonna address this, or, have somebody do some paper, that you say, well, it's might be some solutions. Your ADA chart is there, that's the little line graph that goes there, kind of shows you, Tipton's kind of unique in that, you know, for a long time, from 'oh nine to twenty-three, I mean, we, we have not changed a lot, just about the same number of kids. I guess parents know that kids, they have the same number of kids as their vans have, uh, it doesn't work as far as.
I'm an only child, I have no idea.
And you have one.
I'm an only child of an only child of a grandfather, who's an only child of a four who only had one that had children, we didn't reproduce very well. We need one group for fighting the fella.
Yeah, the one thing we're missing here, we, we don't have our gym floors in here.
That's our regular maintenance care.
Well, at some point, kind of, it stops.
Oh, completely.
I mean, we need to have that in there as far as.
Yeah, I think that happened with, uh, uh, Jarvis. So, if you live earlier than that, I would think.
Can I just begin that?
Let me ask Jason.
But I think we, we polished them.
That was just the problem.
Yeah, it's a saving of down, yeah.
Look, that can't be done anymore.
Two years ago, the gyms were redone, and then last year, they were resurfaced. Two years ago, they were completely redone, because it has new design on it, on the entire gym floor.
No, but, but it can't be redone again, you're just gonna have to add a new floor.
Then it.
There's a way out. So, for God, it didn't, but indoors sports, what's your opinion on the floors will be redone?
What's that? What's our?
Like, you said the floors couldn't be redone, and.
Yeah.
Because they've been, they've been sanded down and redone so many times, they just, what it's to. You're gonna say.
Yeah. It just would be good to have it, I'm, I'm blessed to say, okay, in this range of years, we expect to have a place, just because of the high dollar.
It, it, you literally just stand it all so much, you get them.
You might even know the Android.
For Jim.
I don't know who we have here, we got. Anyone?
So, we got a motion, Robo, second, second by, there, Robo. David, Ashley, and, yes, Sylphius, six, zero.